I now call the Monday, June 14, 2021 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Don't have anyone here to do our invocation, but would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, led this evening by Vice Chair Larry Rankin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Rutherford? Commissioner Musara? Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Griffiths?
Present.
Commissioner Laney?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Here. Four out of three, we do have a quorum. Any announcements this evening from staff? Okay. I'll read my quick little statement. Good evening again, my name is Matt Zurcher, and I'm the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over this evening's deliberations of the commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. The commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are also a surprising number of things the commission cannot take into consideration reviewing an application. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Once the application has been read into the record, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will then direct any questions they have regarding the application to staff. After the commission completes its initial review of the application, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After the applicant has completed their comments, open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the current application being discussed. Moving on to item number six, action items. We have first on the agenda Preliminary Development Plan 21-003, upon the application of Nick Grounds, agent with ASH Dorn LLC. A preliminary development plan... Oh, excuse me, we didn't... Let me go back, and we didn't get to approval minutes. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the April 12, 2021 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right. So, again, Preliminary Development Plan 21-003, upon application of Nick Grounds, agent with ASH Dorn LLC, Preliminary Development Plan for Mingus West Unit 2, a single-family residential community with 243 lots on 151 acres located north of the intersection of State Route 89A and Old Fane Road. Presenting this evening is Eric Fitzer. Take it away, Eric.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, the commission. I'm sorry. So, as you stated, this is PDP 21-003, Mingus West Unit 2. Little bit of verification what this location is. It's adjacent to the existing Mingus West area that is currently being built out. Again, a little bit closer to the site, it's kind of the location of SR 89, Old Fane Road, kind of adjacent to the existing easterly town limits. The current zoning of the site is R1L-18PAD. This zoning was done in approximately 1997, 1998. Again, at the time, there was a concerted effort to do this development, and the existing owners of it developed a portion of the development, which has been developing to this point, as well as certain stubouts for the future development, which Dorn is looking to take over. One thing of note is Dorn is not purchasing the C1-3PAD section. One thing that we'll need to talk about specifically, and I will bring it up right now, is that the current C1-3PAD section is owned by separate property owners on two different sides, and there was some consternation specifically on how we're connecting to those C1-3PAD sections. However, it's something at this point where we can work through this through final development plan. So, as you can see here, here's kind of the first page to the PDP layout. As you can see, they're meeting all requirements of the R1L-18PAD sections, including the flag lots... Sorry, not flag lots, the key lots, the regular lots, and so forth, as well as one of the things that we've had them change specifically is originally what they're calling Morning Star Drive, which was on Fane Road. We're having them downgrade that specifically because in the past, this was looked at, the Fane Road that you see now there off of, has been built by ADOT. So, what they're doing is they're proposing a collector street section, as well as landscape tracks either side with a 10-foot multi-use path on one side, which meets the town regulatory standards. Again, another section, this kind of shows the areas there. If you look kind of to your left, my left, sorry, there's two, the two sections there adjacent to Highway 89A are commercial. We have dead-end streets going into those areas. One of the things that this town staff was looking at specifically on the fire side was that we had connections to those areas, just in case they do ever develop. The developer had approached those groups about purchase, however, they were not willing to move forward this time. So, at this point, you know, the developer is moving forward the rest of the project, which on this town staff's side, we're working with them. Here is the other section specifically to the preliminary development plan. As you can see, we've outlined setbacks and so forth. It all meets minimum required town standards. One of the things that this developer has done for us specifically, and not a lot of times you see this, but they put together kind of preliminary landscape plan, and what you see in landscaping is what you see right here. So, they're looking at entry monument, they're looking at landscaping along what they will be calling Morning Star Boulevard, that was the Old Fane Road, as well as providing some lots here or there where, or some park-type facilities here or there, as well as looking at drainage corridors and so forth. Another example of what the developers were looking at doing is specifically to the branding of their development, as well as other shade structures, landscaping, fencing, and so forth. That said, staff is recommending approval of PDP 21-003, subject to stipulations 1 through 3. If you have any questions for staff, happy to answer those, as well as we have the developer here that's happy to answer those as well.
Eric, I just have one question. Was the... It's been so long now, but when Phase 1 was done, was Phase 2 actually combined in the water certificates? Because I didn't see anything in this paperwork as far as Phase 2 only.
Chair and Vice Chair, it was concluded in that. That was my fault for not including it in there. It had been so long before the Assured Water Supply, and it was before the declaration that I did not include that. My apologies for that.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Fitzer, would you please go back and have more discussion on the comment that you made about downgrading the road? Who's downgrading to what? And then who is maintaining that?
Chair, Commissioner Griffiths. So, the issue was originally Old Fane Road was looked at collect, going from north to south through the subdivision up north. Because of the development of Fane Road kind of to the east of here, it was not a... It did not necessitate the 100-foot-wide corridor through their subdivision. So, what we talked with the developer about was downgrading it to a collector standard that connects north to south, that meets the requirements of the town. They are still electing... They are still electing to provide landscape buffers, as well as open space adjacent to, but because the town has, since 1997, has changed their roadway requirements in this area, is not necessary at this time.
So, the developer's okay with collector standards, as you said?
I'll look back and ask to make sure, but they're okay with it.
And again, who is the town maintaining this?
The town is maintaining the right-of-way. The HOA will be maintaining the landscaped areas adjacent to.
I think Commissioner Griffiths was asking, what's the road? Will the road be turned over to the town?
Right.
My apologies, Chairman, Commissioner Griffiths, yes. The town right-of-way will be turned, or the town, or the right-of-way will be turned over to the town for maintenance and operation.
Okay, thank you. You, Chair.
Just one more question. Will the entry area, will it be similar to Phase 1 with turn lanes and so forth?
Chair, Vice Chair, so one of the items they were working through is specifically to transportation impact analysis, is that they will need to go through town approval as well as ADOT approval. Theoretically, there could be a right-hand in, right-hand out, there could be other things, but until they get to that point, we're not really 100% sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I have one.
Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm looking at quite a few cul-de-sacs on this subdivision, and what I'd like to know is, have they been designed so a fire truck could do a complete turnaround in the cul-de-sacs?
Chair, Commissioner Laney, specifically, they have went through a fire department review. All those fire turnarounds are per fire department standards. I believe it's... 52... Yeah. So, currently, the requirements under the IFC 2018, which we are under, they are meeting all of those.
Okay, okay. Because we've had a lot of emergencies around the country lately, and I've been talking to fire people, and they can't even get in with their fire trucks because the streets are so narrow and everybody's trying to get out, and it's really a problem.
Chair, Commissioner Laney, totally understood. We've looked at that. One of the things that's really great for fire in this case is we have a major access off 89A. We also have four other, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 other access points from the existing Mingus West to this area. So, one of the things that fire was commending the developer on was that amount of access points, so that they have multiple ways to use those areas.
Thank you. I have another question.
Go for it.
Did you have a public meeting with residents that live within the prescribed distance of these new homes?
Chair, Commissioner Laney, I know they've had talks with different folks in the area, specifically with requirements to a PDP application. They are not required to have a formalized neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
However, at this time, we have not had any public comments specific to any of the residents in this area saying that they have issue with this project.
Do you intend to?
Chair, Commissioner Laney, I...
She's nodding her head. Thank you, because I'm really big on public meetings.
Any other questions of staff from the commission?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, Eric, I have about six more questions. In our package, it says that the subject preliminary development plan was routed to external review agencies. Central Arizona Fire and Medical, they provided, they made a comment, and they provided no objections. Do you recall what their comments were?
Chair, Commissioner Griffiths, their comments were specifically about fire requirements for the area. The comments back were that they were in favor of this.
Just as a note aside, I think it would be very helpful in the future, when our reviewing agencies turn in comments, it would really be great to have them in our package.
Okay. Chair, Commissioner Griffiths, I'm fully fine with doing that. I will say, one of the things that we strive to do in this department is make sure that all comments are addressed before we take it in front of the commission. So, a lot of times, that's the reason why you're not seeing those. In this case, if there was comment specific to this subdivision that they had issues with, then we would more than likely, not even more than likely, would provide stipulations associated with. That's the reason why one of the things with this specific project is we want to have three stipulations.
And then who are the reviewing agencies that we process this out to?
Chair, Commissioner Griffiths, so there's internal agencies and external agencies. In this specific case, we have internal agencies such as other planners within the Community Development Department, as well as engineering, public works, fire, police, external, ADOT. In this case, we might have, we do try to find these out to utilities and so forth, such as APS, Sparkling.
Millions, millions of them.
But we have a list, a whole host of, that we send out to.
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate your comments.
I have another question. When you talk about the different agencies, is traffic included in that?
Chair, Commissioner Laney, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Traffic internally is held through our Public Works group. However, externally, when they're adjacent to Arizona Department of Transportation facilities, we send it out to them as well. On top of that, we will typically, through our IPR process, we will actually send it out to Yavapai County, Yavapai Association of Governments.
But something like this one would be turned into the Town Traffic Commissioner or Department, or whatever his title is?
Chair, Commissioner Laney, correct. They went through this. One of the things when we go through PDPs, just as a normal process, is we'll take in what they call a scope of work for a formalized TIA, Transportation Impact Analysis, if required. And we review that scope. At the final development plan, the formalized Transportation Impact Analysis comes in, and we review it. At this point, they haven't fulfilled the formalized TIA, because they are not required to.
Chairman, I ask that when you put together these reports for us, could you, for some of the people who haven't lived here a long time, or the public, determine or put in your proposal that the houses are on either sewers or septics, and they're on wells or town water? Could that be included in the project when you give it to us?
Chair, Commissioner Laney, we can definitely do that.
It would make it easier. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? This time, I'll invite the applicant up.
Thank you for letting us speak this evening. My name's Dave Grounds of Dorn Homes, Dwayne Hunt from Dorn Homes.
Any questions of the applicant from the commission? Go for it.
Nice to see you, Mr. Grounds. Based on approval and processing, when do you anticipate start of construction?
Once we have all the approvals through the town, we're ready to go.
Ready to go.
Yeah, we're excited. There's, we think, a lot of demand for this type of housing on large home sites, and we'll have RV garages as optional, and three-car garages, and places for toys, those sort of things. So, as quickly as we can get it through the town, it'll, what do you think, six months? Six months, something like that?
Thank you.
So, I take it that you're planning on building all the homes?
Yes, sir.
And then, Mr. Grounds, did you have anything to add to the presentation?
We want to invest quite a bit in the landscaping and the feel as you drive in. So, monumentation, we're going to put a lot into that, so it feels really attractive, and it's something that the neighbors next door to us will be proud of. Hopefully, it will help values in that area. We want to create parks, so people have places to play, and dog parks, and those types of things. Architecture will be farmhouse, and ranch, and craftsmen, so we'd like to celebrate what's already happening in the town of Prescott Valley. And we're just excited to have, it's rare to find a home site that's 135 feet by 135 feet, so we just think that's a, it's a nice addition to the town.
Yeah, Chairman, I wanted to add a few things to respond a little bit to some of the questions. We submitted our preliminary traffic impact analysis to ADOT, and just got back comments, and we'll be submitting our full formal TIA to the town and ADOT in the next couple of weeks. So, that process is moving forward. And more than likely, we're going to have some turn lanes out there, very similar to what you saw in the first phase.
Nice.
And then, with, you know, two of those roads going up to the north, I know that it's, you know, most of this is surrounded by state trust land. Are you guys planning on anything in the future up north?
We would love to, we just haven't been able to find any more land. So, yeah, if there was opportunity to expand into other areas up there, we would jump at it, but so far, we haven't had any luck.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I'll open the Florida Public Comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission with regard to this application?
Steve Karros, Pronghorn Ranch. I appreciate Dorn's excitement about making a lot of money. I'm in favor of that. However, we must acknowledge that we are in the worst drought in recorded Arizona history. Regardless of what Mr. Munderlois said, we have a declining water table under us, and it's declining fast. So, instead of using six-year-old figures and stats, I suggest we look at the February release from the ADWR, which went up through 2018, that shows that on the two sub-basins for Prescott Valley and Prescott, in Prescott Valley, we're up well over 70% of all wells that have changed over the last 10 years have declined, and over 82% up towards Prescott. We have a declining water table. Okay? The second thing I want to point out is, I'm told by certain experts that the city of Prescott has to apply to renew their Assured Water Provider designation later this year, and those experts are predicting that the allocations will be less than they were granted in 2009. And what that means is, it should be sending a message to us here in Prescott Valley that we better stop pumping as much water as we are. So, we need to plan out for new construction each and every time we discuss this, whether it was approved 25 years ago, because this drought started 22 years ago. We need to start planning on maybe pumping the brakes and keeping an eye on what's going to happen with this drought, especially since 20% is almost for sure going to be cut back on Phoenix in August. So, I appreciate that one of you mentioned the water. It's not hardly been mentioned in the last year and a half here...
Well, there's a reason for that, Mr. Karros. We can't actually legally discuss water. We are forbidden to do so. Water falls under the ADWR, Arizona Department of Water Resources, because the town fits within the Prescott Active Management Area, which is administered by the ADWR, and that is why we cannot take it into consideration.
Well, I appreciate that, but maybe Dorn should, because we're going to be in a cri... Well, we are in a crisis, let's face it, but I do appreciate that information. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And nothing against Dorn, I live in a Dorn home. It's just I'm very concerned with what I'm seeing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have the applicant back up to just quickly address comment.
As, you know, business people and residents of the area, we share the same concerns about water. This project had a Certificate of Assured Water Supply from ADWR, and we just actually went back into them, or about to submit, actually, for just updating it, shifting it over to us as the new owner. And we have voluntarily put in CCNR's a restriction to no turf on any of the lots unless people use a, some sort of rain catchment or cistern system, so that they can water their yard without using any potable water, as one of our restrictions. And we are limiting it to all the planting to the low-water-use plants that are on the towns. I guess you have a list of accepted plants that are low-water-use. So, we're doing everything we can to minimize the water use out there and stay in line with what we're all trying to do and conserve water.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to further discussion and/or motion. Any further discussion on this of the commission? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Preliminary Development Plan 21-003, with subject to the stipulations 1 through 3?
I'd like to make that motion.
It's been moved in seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Moving on to action item number two, Preliminary Development Plan 21-004, upon application of Vanessa Andrews with Prescott Valley Signature Entertainment OZ LLC, a preliminary development plan for Homestead 2, a mixed-use retail restaurant, parking garage, and apartment complex with 7,624 square feet of retail space, 5,456 square feet of restaurant space, and 329 1, 2, and 3-bedroom apartment units with ancillary office and amenities on 5.6 acres located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Florentine Road. Eric, take it away.
Commission, thank you very much for that introduction. Again, this is PDP 21-004, Homestead 2. This is a very exciting project for the downtown area, specifically the entertainment area associated with the town of Prescott Valley. Again, so this is kind of the overall site. When you look zoomed out, it's adjacent to Florentine and Main Street. We'll close in a little bit on that area. So, right here, it's Florentine Main Street, adjacent to the Finlay Toyota Center. Zoning of the site is C2PAD, which is, which allows these uses specifically in that area. Here's a generalized site plan. I didn't include every page that the commission got in the site plan, just because ultimately, when it comes to a site plan, you kind of look at the bottom floor anyway. So, they're looking at taking access off of Main Street. They're looking at providing parking along Florentine, as well as, there's the current parking along Main Street, and a multi-level garage facility. One of the ideas that the group put together was specifically wrapping the garage facility, because they would like that use and that ability to use those parking spaces for other events and so forth in the area with apartments, which made perfect sense in this specific area. So, it is a dense project. I like to call it cozy, because, you know, density typically kind of scares some people, but when you get down to it, if you do it right, it does not feel that dense. If you look across the street, you have about three-story apartment complexes, so this is a little bit more vertical. However, one of the things that they're doing as part of this project is providing a retail-type component on the bottom floor and the top floor, when it comes down to it. The bottom floor specifically is the retail piece. There'll be storefronts along Florentine and a portion of along Main Street. You see these type of developments in more urbanized areas. In the specific case, they are wanting to provide this now because of what's going on around the Toyota Finlay Center. on in and around the Toyota Finlay Center and, and also because of what's going on in the entertainment center. One of the things they proposed with the specific development is there's a top-floor, uh, six-story, uh, restaurant that they're looking to develop as well. Um, the top-floor six-story restaurant would be very unique when it comes to this type of development. Um, a lot of times when you get a developer in, they will typically want to stick all retail on the bottom so that you get the foot traffic. And this case, they're actually creating more of a unique setting specifically for their type of development. Um, and again, sorry, as the, the chairman stated, we're looking at multiple units, um, and one, two, and three bedrooms. Uh, these units would be available to anyone. They're looking at a clubhouse area as well as two other, well, three specific courtyards, one of which will have a pool, other two courtyards, um, will have open space areas so that each individual unit opens up on a courtyard, which is somewhat unique as well when you get into this type of development. As you can see here, specifically to the landscape plan, um, the developer is providing ample landscaping in and around pool area, courtyards, and landscaping along Florentine specific to areas around the, the parking. The ingress, egress, as you can see, it's a little bit easier to see on this one, is from Main Street. Um, they're providing multiple parking spaces on a per-floor basis. Uh, one of the things is, uh, that they're providing is, uh, the ample amount of parking to make sure that their residents, as well as even public, can utilize those spaces. Here are the elevations. Um, these are, these are the east and north. Um, as you can see from the east elevation, you, um, you can see specifically where the, the apartments are as well as some of the, the retail space kind of to, toward your bottom right. Um, on the top, the north elevation, you can see those, those there. One of the things they're looking at creating is kind of a courtyard area adjacent to the courtyard area that has been provided along with the Finlay Center. Here are the elevations. The areas that you see grayed out are the kind of open space areas that those courtyards are in with the west elevation. Um, the south elevation, you see some of those, uh, architectural monuments as well. Again, what the, the, the group was looking to do was provide architecture that would be similar to, but not exactly the same as what's existing out there. However, from the review of staff, those, uh, that architecture definitely complements what's going on specifically across the street. Photometrics, uh, photometrics meet all town standards. Um, they are not over trespassing light. Um, in fact, they are keeping it to as minimum as possible. They will be providing some lighting along the access point kind of the, what'd be the top of the site. Um, the other areas specifically, uh, towards the development already have those accent lighting. However, if there's any accent lighting that needs, or any lighting that needs to be replaced, it will meet town standards. With that said, uh, staff is, uh, re, staff is, uh, not requiring, sorry, recommending approval, uh, PDP 21-004, Homestead Two, Preliminary Development Plan, subject, subject to stipulations one through seven. With that said, uh, staff will answer any questions you have. We also have the applicant here.
Uh, Eric, I've got, um, two things. The first, uh, that I'd like to talk about is I'd, I'd like to hear your, um, what your discussions were about the angle parking on Florentine. If I'm, uh, I'm wrong, I apologize, but it seems as though it's the first time that we have, uh, done that as a town and Florentine and with this facility, which I happen to like, but which is there is gonna cause even more traffic on Florentine. Um, I'd kind of like to get a feel for what the discussions were about, um, the feasibility of that angle parking.
Uh, Chair, uh, Vice Chair. So there was a lot of discussion specifically to that. Originally, there was some talk about maybe doing some, uh, parallel parking along there. Public Works was not very much in favor of that, uh, just because of how you pull in, pull out, those kinds of things. Um, one of the things that Public Works specifically said along Florentine, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, it needs to be angular parking. So what's gonna happen is, uh, the angular parking will be owned by the town. And so it'll be public parking and that will offset some of the requirements associated with parking in other areas, um, specific to the Finlay parking agreement. We have a parking agreement with the Finlay, a parking agreement specifically to this area where we required 1,000 spaces. And, um, this site does offset some, but they still have plenty of parking to take care of that as well as additional providing park, parking along Florentine. So one of the things that we'll look at is with the, the, there will be a transportation impact analysis associated with this, um, when we go to final development plan. However, Public Works has signed off on looking at this, uh, this concept along Florentine.
Okay. And my, my second question, and correct me if I'm wrong again, um, but I, I didn't see, don't we require a certain amount of storage for every unit?
Uh, Chair, Vice Chair, we do. And they provided that. That was my mistake. One of the things, uh, I included in your, uh, your packets was a layout of the clubhouse area. However, one of the requirements is that they included a layout of each individual, uh, one, two, three, three bedrooms. And in that case, we reviewed that and each of them are including that required storage space.
I, I didn't see it anywhere on here, but that will be part of the final.
And Chair, Com, uh, Vice Chair, they did include it, um, and that was my mistake, not including your packets, but, um, we, we definitely reviewed it.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Fitzher, my heart somewhat leans towards Mr. Commissioner Rankin on this parallel parking. Can you take us back to the electrical overlay site?
No, good.
Oh, that's right, angled parking, sorry. I failed trigonometry.
This one kind of accentuates it a little bit more.
It does, I like the other one better.
Okay.
One, the, there you go.
Okay.
So Florentine is an extremely busy road. Day, morning, night, lots of truck traffic, lots of cars coming around those corners. I guess that we're gonna have to remove part of the sidewalk and the dirt area that's already there and come in with the angled parking area?
Uh, Chair, Commissioner Griffiths, there is gonna be some movement of some of that. However, they are providing specifically, uh, sidewalk area landscaping associated with it. So, um, although there's gonna be some movement on that, it's still gonna be provided as part of this development.
When the TIA comes through, can they disagree with this angled parking and have concerns over it? Or since the town is already signed and sealed, it's moving forward?
Uh, Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Griffiths, so in this specific case, I don't believe the TIA would specifically spell out whether we're gonna allow or not allow angled parking. That's a really more of a, a, a call by the Public Works Department. In this case, um, they have stated that they're okay with this. Um, it kind of goes back to the question on the previous where, um, if we had specific comments from Public Works that said, "We are not in favor of this angled parking along Florentine," then that would be one comment that, or at least a stipulation that would come in front of the commission.
I guess thank goodness for backup cameras. I have one more question, Mr. Fitzher. Under the C2 density regulations, I saw that you cannot exceed three stories. Share with me how the additional stories happened and where is that in the process?
Uh, Chair, Commissioner Griffiths, so one of the things specific to our, our town center area is there was a planned area development overlay put into effect years ago. Um, I won't give you the exact date because I know I'll be wrong. Um, but we have a maximum height of, I believe, 80 feet.
76.
No, okay, I'm sorry. I know, so one of the things when I, so I did the review on this and, um, they, specifically in a lot of the, the town center area, they have a PAD which gives a maximum height and that was kind of done through zoning years and years ago. I may be wrong on the 80 feet, but I believe that's, that's max. In this case, I believe they're at 74.
74.6.
Yes. So, and I apologize for not knowing that specifically off the top of my head. Um, one of the things we really look at is the density district side and the density district side requires some, like, amount of units per acre. And one of the things that, um, was under that density district specifically in this area and the PAD was through allowing as much as possible. And the goal of that by, again, the FAN group as well as the, the town, um, at the time was to promote more of an urban living type, uh, facility in that area. So that was the reason for that. Again, I, I can report back on specific height. I know it, I honestly think it's more than 80, but I know it's a least 80 because when I did the review, I looked at it.
I think that this is an extremely exciting project. I mean, kudos to you and all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Well, it's the developer, it's, I'm just reviewing.
Well, you had a lot to do with it. Thank you, Eric.
I have a question.
Commissioner Laney?
A couple. Um, I'm really excited about this project and I'm really excited about the restaurant. Now, the restaurant will be at the top and how will the public access the restaurant from the exterior of the complex?
So it's probably a better question to answer the applicant. Um, if she wants me to answer, I will, but I believe.
Eric, we'll have her up, she can definitely, you know, answer that at the time.
She'd be a better answer on that than me.
Okay, I can wait.
Any other questions of staff, though? All right. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we'll invite the applicant up.
Smaller than the other guys that have been up here. Shorter, I should say.
Wouldn't please give you, give us your name for the record.
Vanessa Andrews, I'm with the FAN Signature Group. Happy to be before the chairman, commissioners, um, with this exciting project. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I'm happy to start with the restaurant.
Please do.
Okay. So if you can look on the corner, um, of Main Street and Florentine, um, there will be a little vestibule in that area that takes people from the parking garage out onto the corner of the event plaza and allow them to park in the garage and go across the street for events at the event center. So there'll be a little vestibule in there that has access to an elevator that's inside and that will take you to the top floor, to the restaurant.
Very good. And it's my understanding that the first two floors will be public parking?
Um.
Parking garage?
I can't attest for the first two floors, but I want to say there's about 120 parking spaces total. So maybe the first one and a half floors, I'm not sure where that cutoff point is.
And as far as the tenants go, what, what prevents the public from going beyond the, the public parking into the private parking?
So there'll be a gate there that, uh, tenants will have a fob to access into the parking garage.
Oh, this is amazing.
I know, it's very exciting.
I might just have one question. I know that maybe not fully, um, involved with it anymore, but the, um, the first Homestead, Homestead One, what kind of, um, occupancy rate have they been running? Do you have any idea?
I do. 99%. And that percentage rate is we do have two units that, um, we set aside for models. It's not models, but I can't think of the right word at the time. You know, for people to come and view. So we are at full occupancy and it's been that way since we opened. We found that people really like, um, living in close proximity to services and we, it was especially noticeable during COVID, um, people walked the plaza there and, um, we've been doing a lot of improvements on the plaza as well.
As good as Phase One turned out, I'm looking forward to Phase Two.
Yeah, and it's, we've just dubbed it Homestead Two, um, because we haven't officially named it yet, but I want to make sure you guys know that it's not gonna be another Homestead name.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Open the Florida public comments, anyone wishing to comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for the discussion and/or motion. Any other fur, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve Preliminary, excuse me, Preliminary Development Plan 21-004 with stipulations one through seven?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve Preliminary Development Plan 21-004 dubbed as Homestead Two with the stipulations attached.
All right. It's been moved in second, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. Moving on to item number eight, public hearing items. Uh, this evening we have general plan amendment 21-001. Upon the initiation of the Town of Prescott Valley Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to ARS 9-461.06, a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing and making a recommendation to the town council related to the proposed public participation plan to be used in assisting the community in updating the town's general plan to be known as Prescott Valley General Plan 2035. Eric?
Uh, Chair, members of the commission, thank you very much for that introduction. Um, again, this is just the public participation plan or the proposed public participation plan associated with our general plan update. So, just a little bit of background, uh, the general plan 2025 was ratified with voters in March of 2013. Uh, state law requires municipalities to update the general plan every 10 years. The approval of the public participation plan is the first step in the process. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, hopefully the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval to the council of the participation plan. So just kind of, uh, what's in the general plan? So currently, a proposed 2035 plant, general plan will include the following elements: land use, circulation, open space, growth area, environmental and water resources, housing, economic development. And one of the things we're looking at is a new addition of education. Uh, one of the things that the councils kind of told staff is that they want to include a education element. Um, in the past, I've done a few of these and a lot of times we'd like to include it in the economic development element. So that's gonna be the recommendation. However, if it turns out that way, great. If it doesn't, we're fine, like, everything's good as well. Um, because technically by statute, there is no education-type element. However, so you house it within something else. So in this case, we're looking at housing and economic development because education goes along with economic development. If you have good education facilities, you have good economic development as well. So again, state law requires municipalities update the general plan every 10 years. Um, back in the previous, uh, general plan, it was kind, it was done right towards the end of the economic downturn. At the time, the state legislature, um, allowed municipalities to move a little bit slower when it requ, when the requirement was for bringing a general plan through the process. And the reason doing so is that consultant fees and those types of things. One of the things we're looking at doing is to keep this in-house. We have a general plan that served the, the town well for many years and we like to continue to do that. However, one of the things that we'll be looking at doing is updating through the 2000, or the 2020 census. We'll also be looking at updating specifically in the housing, um, section. We, uh, we've all seen it, um, councils kind of talked about it. Even, uh, the commission since I've been here has kind of talked a little bit about it, affordable housing, housing and those types of things. We have a housing, uh, strategy that was done early in, like, not early in the 2000s, but somewhat early in the 2000s from now. So one of the recommendations we've already talked about is that we're gonna update that housing strategy and take that through the process as well. So that's one thing we're already forward looking at, um, specific to the general plan. So that's one thing we're already forward-looking at, specific to the general plan. So here's what we're looking at at this point. Because we're not making manifest changes to the general plan, we're looking to process this through the Planning and Zoning Commission through regular meetings as well as through the council. So when you start looking at this, we're looking at potentially the state for a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're looking for a town council adoption of a resolution. In the past, we adopted the participation plan through a resolution through council. And then we'll start doing staff review. Once we go through staff review, we'll start bringing each section to the Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure that we're in tune with what's going on in the public and what's going on with the Planning and Zoning Commission. At some point, we'll look at making potential modifications to those plans, taking them from the council on a per-element basis, and then what we do is, per statute, we would start a 60-day review process. A 60-day review goes out to everyone. So it would go out to the county, the state, local authorities, adjacent jurisdictions, and so forth. Once that 60-day review is done, we would then take in all those comments and start moving through that, and potentially looking at a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, number one. By statute, we have to, we not have to, we are required to take it through two different public hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first one is fully public. The second is the Planning and Zoning Commission could potentially take an action, whether for or against that, with, which is not for or against, but a recommendation to council. Town council would then hear it. If town council approves it, we have 120-day deadline specifically to get it on the voters to go to vote. Because of the size of our town, we are required to send it out to the public for adoption. And if the public approves it, that would be at the possible election date. Once, if they approve it, then the, the plan would be approved. So this is a generalized, you know, schedule. Things may miss, things may not. We're really pushing to get on the possible election date of November 8th, 2022, that being the general election. It is a little bit of a fast process. However, based upon our review of the general plan, we don't believe on the staff's side that we're going to have many changes to it, besides that of updating here or there and going through this public process and hearing what others, others speak, feel, and want to talk about. So that's kind of where we're at. And with that said, you know, staff would like to move to, or move to recommend approval of the GPA 21-001, General Plan 2031, Public Participation Plan to the Town Council. Happy to answer any questions that the commission would have.
Any questions?
Eric, in the, in the timeline, then basically the work studies that our board will have will basically be the majority of the changes or any changes that staff and the town recommends will be in at that time?
Chair, vice chair, it would be. However, we are, we will be taking public comment. Now, after that 60-day review, we may end up with others, and it's one thing that we pride ourselves on is making sure that we're responsive to the public.
So I guess what the point, I apologize, the point I'm getting at is, we can, as a board then, we can basically, which we all have copies of, the 2025 general plan, we can kind of be reviewing that so that when we come into the October and November work studies, that we'll be able to better understand the, the changes or modifications that are being looked at.
Chair, vice chair, that's exactly correct. What we'll end up doing is, we have more documents of the old plan, of the 2025 plan, and we'll be making track changes as well as giving you clean copies. That way, you're able to see what specifically could be changed. And again, if you guys come in and we do other conversations over the phone and you'd like different things, we're open to that. We're just like, just like anyone else in the community.
So you mentioned that you'd been through a couple of these before. Does that mean you're going to be the lead dog?
I will be the lead dog on this. I will be tapping some of my staff to do it, specifically on the affordable housing side. We brought in a new planner. I didn't announce that, but you'll see him fairly soon. He has got an affordable housing background, and the current, one of the current planners you met, Ed, also has some background in kind of our existing programs here. So what we're going to do is we'll break that up, and on top of that, you'll probably see other department heads as too, to talk about those circulation, open space, types of things.
Thank you, Chairman. Go ahead.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Eric. Mr. Fitzher, I applaud you in this aggressive schedule, and we're here to help you any way we can. This is important to the community, so I'm happy you're our lead dog.
Chair, Commissioner, thank you very much.
Commissioner Laney?
I have a question. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the citizen participation in this whole process will only be at the hearings. Is that correct?
Chair, Commissioner, no. And my apologies for just flatly saying no.
That's okay.
We're going to have websites set up. We'll have public comments set up. We'll also, more than likely, be doing some, like, one of the things we're looking at doing is some outreach meetings as well. So we're looking at setting up specifically a website for it, those types of things. Every meeting that you guys have or we're talking about this will be a public hearing. It will be advertised. So our goal is to have much, as much public participation as possible. Again, one of the things we pride ourselves on is that this is a public process. This isn't just a community development. We're trying to move this through. It's, this will be a public process, and we will, we will move this through, through that process, so.
And you'll be working through the various HOA communities also?
Chair, Commissioner Laney, yes. And again, it's one of the things, you know, I'm fairly new to the, the community, so if there's certain groups that we should be meeting with, I'm all for that, and we will be meeting with them. I just, you know, it's, it's not my depth at this point. But the commission says certain things, and once we start going through this process, some sort of council will be asking certain questions as well as the, the public, too. So we're, I'm happy to meet with anyone as long.
My experience is that the more you reach out to the people versus expecting them to come to you, you'll get a better product.
Chair, Commissioner, I 100% agree.
Thank you.
It seems as though the last time that we actually had like a questionnaire, a questionnaire of type that went out along with the water bills so that everybody kind of got something that had some specific things that were being talked about, recommendations and so forth from the public that they could either mail in or maybe go to the website now and do. So that was done last time.
Chair and vice chair, like, that's, that's a great suggestion, and we will tap into that.
Then, Eric, I had a quick question on the work study workshops. Is that just with, within the commission, or are we end up, are going to be, because we haven't had a work study with council in ages. So are we going to be having one prior to this process or during this process?
Chair, I, I think that's a great request. We can definitely put that into this process, and I would agree that I think that's a good idea at this point, especially because you guys not, have not had that in a while, and specifically because we have a newer council and those types of things. So I think that's, that's a great idea, and it's one thing I'll bring up with management. And we'll, we'll see how about scheduling one between the commission and the council.
Okay.
Well, and I appreciate the point that you brought up about November 8th was being a general election because we don't want to do anything that would delay that and have to cause a special election, which then costs the Town of Prescott Valley a ton of money. So it's important that we stay on the guidelines that you've kept for us.
And Chair and Commission, Vice Chair, you know, that, that's our goal, and, you know, ultimately, even if we get to a general election and we have not reached out to everybody and then for some reason the thing fails, then I haven't done my job. So our goal is to have as much public participation as possible, make sure that the commission, council is comfortable with it as well as the other commissions. So that's the goal.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? All right, seeing none, because this is a public hearing item, I will open the floor to the public. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing aspect and bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion to approve General Plan 21-001?
Like to make a motion to approve GPA 21-001.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
All right, moved in second. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. Item number nine, called to public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further discussion and decision at a later date. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Go ahead.
Steve Karros, Pronghorn Ranch. This is the real reason I came tonight, and this is my area of expertise on one side of the issue as well as on the other. So I'm not sure, because I wasn't paying that much attention regarding subdivision 20 in the northwest end of Pronghorn Ranch and whatever they're calling the other side that was left vacated in Viewpoint, but I was told by two different DORN middle-level folks that that area was not going to be built on. And there's a couple of other things involved in that that I won't concern you folks with. However, it's important for this commission and the general public to understand that the declarative Pronghorn Ranch has initiated an engineering study from Kinder Morgan, who owns the 20 to 24-inch natural gas transmission pipeline through this high consequence area. The Federal Department of Transportation abbreviates that as HCA, which would be how you would look it up on the internet to see the rules, et cetera. That pipeline carries a minimum of 150 PSI. For those who don't know what that means, that's a bunch. The proposed plans that I have seen that I did not, I was told weren't really going to happen, but now it looks like they want to do it, they're calling for three to four residential roads crossing over that transmission line in a very small area. And that would also leave numerous homes on the west side of the plans with no way to get out of there except to cross over the pipeline. That's way unacceptable. You are locking the people in on the other side of a 150-pound-per-square-inch pipeline. So the other problem there, that is a floodplain. And in talking with a DORN soils engineer supervisor, that would take an awful lot of grading and all that, but ultimately, in order to run what waters were supposed to have in a monsoon, the channels would have to be brought down deeper and made narrower to fit these homes, if you can picture that. Bringing those channels down deeper just brings it closer to the pipeline. So if, if this commission is not familiar with the explosion in San Bruno, California, it's really important to become familiar with that because it's the same kind of pipeline and it's the same age, 1954, steel with welds. So it, it has its potentials, and so the DOT is very concerned that the building and everything around that is done safely. And I don't see the propositions or proposals seem to indicate that. Additionally, there are five primary county adjoining communities going clockwise: Copperfield, Puquita Valley, Antelope Meadows, Coyote Springs, Ventura Ranch, and then that swings down to the Town of Prescott Valley areas, including, and I don't know, I think it's Antelope something or other, the Mandalay Home Project there in the old Valerie Richter land. It goes into there, and then, of course, we have Pronghorn Ranch and Viewpoint, lots and lots of homes and lots and lots of people. However, these eight communities have a flawed egress design that flows into two choke points at Viewpoint-Pronghorn Parkway intersection and the Antelope Meadows and Coyote Springs intersection. That's a whole lot of people if we have a problem trying to get out through those two choke points. There is talk of putting Parkview through, but that would be very limited improvement. It would be some, but it'd be very limited, almost none, and this is where I'm an expert on public safety and fleeing disasters and all that kind of stuff. That wouldn't do much good for Pronghorn to go northwest out of there. It would do some good for Viewpoint to come southeast to get out to the other choke, choke point, if you can picture what I'm talking about. At any rate, a significant wildfire or a gas issue with that pipeline, well, we had the wildfire in 2018, could get people and animals hurt or even killed trying to get out of there. Remember, these county cousins of ours have horses and other animals they put in trailers, and a, a slip-up with a livestock trailer could really jam the single lanes there. At any rate, and I believe the town is at great liability risk by ignoring this infrastructure inadequacy, they, they need to improve it, and with these two new projects that they're looking at and the one in Shadow Ridge that's almost finished, it's just adding more and more people that need to flee through those choke, choke points. And I am almost done, thank you. So anyway, it's my expert opinion that planning for protecting the public safety must come before approving further building in, in this unsafe area. So it is time to make the developers pay for and complete such infrastructure before any further building is approved, unlike the failed end-of-contract agreements with the developer of Viewpoint regarding that egress. So I'd like to encourage this body to put those things first. Public safety should always be first. So is there anything I need to clarify? Because I was buzzing as fast as I could for you.
No, we have it recorded. So, Mr. Karros, thank you. In fact, Eric, would you mind responding to Mr. Karros, especially some of the things that, you know, with regard to Viewpoint and Pronghorn, but also just share with him some of the things that are going to be happening with Glassford Hill? Thank you. At this point in time, it would come to the, I'm going to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you.